Killing line. Because runners, there are a few of them, they're getting the runners killed. You know, those people standing there watching. They're looking at the runners. They wouldn't stand there and do it.
I'd love to do it.
I hadn't seen that. I decided, I think I'll call volunteer to sit in punishment because I, I know what I do. Yeah, I'll give him a Friday. And the first one to go, the other two to watch him. The next one, the other guy watches him. He has to watch the other two together.
Oh, yes.
So you got it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Humble of their life, those two things.
That would be punishment, that'd be punishment for me.
Actually, they could have an hour left or that, but they would be blasting the dog.
You can download, uh, horseshoe again.
Would you like to call this council work session, the Council of Bellic Greenbills, April sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, to order? Quick call the roll, please.
Adams.
Here.
Dries. Halter. Hermes.
Here.
Walter.
Here.
Walterman.
Here.
Merrill.
Here. Um, Dries is out of town on business and I anticipate that Mr. Halter will be here. But, he isn't now, so I say let's just. Barrel.
Here.
They were talking.
Here. Just say, just say here.
Here.
All right, uh, let's begin with the Streets of Services Committee, the American Legion Cross easement. Ms. Kovak, I believe you may have the deets.
I'm sure do. Um, I can't, another, um, crude math, but we need to discuss a couple of items on here. Uh, we've did, we have discussed from time to time, putting a cross easement in place. Um, actually, we've looked at a couple of different scenarios and we've discussed a couple of times a cross easement because with a cross easement, we're not selling any property, we're not buying any property, but we're giving, um, all the parties to the agreement, the right to drive in the driveways, park in the parking places, you know, egress, that kind of thing. So, a couple of the issues that we need to look at, um, you have two, two maps on the flip side here. The one, the one that's outlined in green actually shows the parcels that are involved. Uh, one thing that screws it up a little bit is our, our building that we're sitting in right now isn't actually pictured on here, but the driveway, I've tried to denote the driveway, um, that's right outside our building, over here. Uh, then we have the piece that goes behind, uh, Mark Wharf House, the driveway that goes up alongside the American Legion, uh, the parking lot behind that, and then all of the property that we, the village owns, which includes the little piece that goes down to Wynton is where the, uh, the cannon and the bell, the bell tower thing sit, that's actually property we own. And then the piece that goes back to Ireland is a piece that the, um, Legion actually owns. So, we're including everything. Um, however, when it comes time to actually, if council chooses to do a cross easement, if you flip it over, uh, I thought we might want to, um, a couple of things. First, we would eliminate the area, an area by the, by the fire department, so they have the area they need to maneuver and to park their, their trucks and maneuver their trucks. Uh, and also, at the north end of the site, where, where the parking lot currently ends, and it gets a little scrubby, but there's trees and everything back there, I thought we would take that out, so there could never be any mistake. We don't intend for people to go back there and start parking back in that area. Um, the one thing that I did not crosshatch on yours, but that we thought we'd better include, um, and that's that little piece that goes to Wynton where the, the bell and the, uh, cannon currently are, because right now, that is, the American Legion is putting stuff on our property. If they ever choose to move that, it would come out of this easement area, okay? But right now, they, they don't really have that legal authorization to have their stuff on the property, so this would give them that authorization through this whole process. So this helps us in a lot of respects, obviously, it, it will help their building to be a little bit, hopefully, a lot more marketable if they can indicate that they have parking available to the site. Um, it helps us because it ensures that we'll have continued use of the driveway. It comes up alongside, uh, the American Legion building, which they do actually own, that's our private address, but they actually own it. So, uh, I think it benefits to everybody, um, if we do this, but I, I want to know first, I guess, are, are you, if we proceed along these lines, gonna work on this for a little while, but are, are you happy, like, leaving out that northern portion where the trees are? First off, if that's agreeable, and then the, the area where the, um, fire department keeping that as well.
I guess at the time, it'll denote the actual footage, how far it's going back, up, you know, as far as.
Yes, yes, because what I, I would do, we, uh, we do want to actually have, I'll probably use Duffy, go out and, and actually give us a description of the easement, so there can be no mistake in the future of exactly what's included with that easement.
So the easement, if it were approved, recorded on both the deets for our property and their property.
Ma'am. I have a couple of questions. Um, by the description, you mean a survey of makes and bounds and the direction of it, so it will be very specific, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Second question is, are we having an exclusive or a non-exclusive easement?
Non-exclusive.
Non-exclusive. And then, are we the dominant or are we the servient? Have we, have we described that, have we separated that, or have we decided that? Um, if we are dominant versus serving, it depends on who is going to be paying the upkeep or whether or not there's an agreement in writing for fifty-fifty, and if there is an agreement, uh, will it have an expiration date? Because if it doesn't have an expiration date, we cannot ever back out of it.
And actually, I'll, obviously, I want the attorney to answer any of those questions. I can't tell you it's written, and this is just draft. Before I gave you a sample that I just pulled off the internet, now the attorney's actually drafted, um, like, either for us that does put the, uh, maintenance at fifty-fifty for the, um, responsibility for the park.
For the parking area itself.
Correct. So we don't want to be solely responsible for the upkeep of that.
So, um, this being a new document, you know, you'll, I want you to take it and look through it, so that every time you can, you know, have a little bit.
Oh, sorry. That's actually a place.
Sorry.
So sorry. But I would be interested in knowing the, uh, who would be making the survey and, um, and I would be also interested in knowing about if it would have any kind of dates involved in it or not.
Okay, yeah, and as far as the dates, I, I think how this document is currently written is it, it goes with the land and it's permanent unless, unless the law area changes. You know, and, and like, for example, the area with the bell, if that condition changes, then that piece falls off, it's no longer covered with it, so. Um, but again, I'll, I'll make sure that Jeff Forbes is prepared to answer.
I just, just would like to know also who is going to be doing the survey of it. Anytime, are we going to be able to see also the survey of it or not?
Oh, absolutely, that would be attached. By the time this comes to you in a final form.
Okay.
It would be attached.
And she said it might be done.
Doug engineers.
Okay. They've done so much, so many surveys, it's like easy access for them to, I think it saves us money because they already have so much of the data available. Oh, that makes sense.
If an expiration date is, is good or bad, I think, if it has an expiration date, I think for marketability, for someone to buy that, I, I might hinder some things, because they think, oh, we're gonna buy it in thirty years.
Well, the other side of it is, people never be able to get out of it, so. That's something that I think the attorney should, um, know that, or advise them that.
Just a quick question. Um, are you including or putting in kind of provisions for ELIC's parking and also perhaps the first, the middle aisle for, um, parking for the administration building during business hours? I know I've come up here during bingo days and I've had to walk up.
I don't even come on bingo days, I mean, that's excluded, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if we could have signage maybe on the one, um, light post that just says during certain business hours, like what the administration office would be open at, if it's restricted to municipal parking?
LX and, you know, LX has got their parking spots and.
Yeah.
We've got ours, of course, that's make a lot of difference, that's important, I guess. Well, doesn't LX have a separate lease?
Yes, but we don't have anything defined on the parking.
Okay.
So that's.
I guess if that happens, we'll do the same thing, our, our parking lot, just define how many spaces there will have ahead of the time to release until it's gone.
Well, that would be a part of the, or should that be a part of the lease?
Yeah, we would.
I think we, they don't own anything.
Yeah, they would have to modify the lease.
No.
We did have a lot of parking space.
Or we may want to simply exclude, you know, we're already gonna eliminate some for the fire department area, we may want to exclude a road parking, literally. Because this is intended to be a non-exclusive. Um, so we may, I'll, I'll talk to the attorneys and see.
All right, thank you. Understand that the concern is that we should definitely have the ability for individuals coming to the municipal building to park uh, without a lot of effort. And certainly LX has been a good tenant for a lot of years and they shouldn't have any trouble. But that should probably be in writing.
Okay.
Okay? So, everybody.
Appreciate the comments.
Happy with the situation. All right. Next, I'm Community Reinvestment Act.
Okay, and I, I apologize, I was close to handing my materials up here a bunch of days, but, um, a few issues came up and I was not able to complete it, so I'll pay more the next.
Is it, uh, not particularly finance sensitive?
Um, I want you to know why, as quickly as possible. We did have a chance to talk about it in the finance committee and I was preparing some additional, um, data and that's what I did not even have opportunity to conclude.
Okay.
But I would hope to give ordinance, um, some time, it's not, just trying to process.
Fair enough, fair enough. So, that all of the business items that we've got?
No, actually, I did have one more. One more, sorry.
Such other matters, if I thought.
Yes, I had a council meeting, mentioned the, uh, proposal that Beth Saul Parker had given us to continue the work on the National Historic Landmark nomination and told you I would get a copy of it as soon as I had it available. And she has sent that to me, it is attached. Jeff felt that ordinance would be better than a, um, motion, so he has prepared the attached ordinance. Um, you can certainly take a look at it and I would hope to have this on the day agenda.
Okay.
And actually, you've, you've seen this work list before because it's the same one that we would have submitted when we were attempting to get the grant money. Um, but she will simply be doing all the work now at our expense versus a portion being paid for the grant.
So I guess the biggest question looks like thirteen and a half thousand plus, um, Miss Lee's expenses of five hundred, so about fourteen thousand dollars. And we've got that somewhere in the budget, or you've got someplace where you can, uh?
There's somewhere we can show you. Oh, good, because we already have about sixty-eight hundred built in for our portion of the credit, so it's about an additional six, seven, that you have to.
And this is something that we can also keep into readings?
Or maybe two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, all right, so this is something that you'd like council to at least begin to act on?
Correct.
At the, uh, the. Fair enough. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding National Historic Landmark ordinance?
Um, do we have a, a date that we're asking her to complete the nomination by? I know she has a lot of other projects going on.
The timeline, final report says six fifteen fourteen. It seems out there.
Yeah, the, the reports actually get submitted sooner, she's also incorporating time to actually go to Washington and make the presentation and, and the whole shebang there. Uh, submission for review is December of this year. Then revisions production is second draft by February of fourteen. Uh, new submission by March of fourteen. And by draft by May, and final report June.
Is any of her income key to that?
I'm sorry?
Is any of her compensation key to those goals?
Um, yeah, it's all tied to the completion of these items. Or she will, I bill us as she completes those steps. Did I understand your question right?
Yeah. All right. You bill, you bill for paid services.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? I did. Just add something to the agenda to our executive session. You'd like to make a motion to add this to the agenda, is that correct? I would like to make a motion to add an executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment compensation of full-time village employees. Okay, is there a second to the, uh, agenda addition? All in favor of adding this item to the agenda, please signify by saying aye. So in my, those tensions, it's added to the agenda. Now, what, Jeff?
Should I, oh, that's all right. Should we have a discussion on something that's outside of?
Yes.
I, I think we should talk about process, um, just given what has taken place with my committee over the Doves project, the most bushed option. Uh, I, there, there's a number of things that I've learned in the process and, um, I've been thinking even prior to anything, uh, taking place that I wanted to adjust. A couple of things happened where I've realized I don't like to be surprised, I like to have some time to look at something. Uh, one adjustment I'd like to make concerning our committee is I want to be able to pass project sheets by you guys and then, um, recast them by you two weeks, typically two weeks after that. And, and the purpose of passing project sheets is to field concerns. Uh, I would hope that the primary areas would be, because there's so much, uh, there's so much history in the village, I just don't know. You know, when, when we talk about adjusting something, we just don't know if there's some historical tie to it, we don't know, um, you know, what, what the past is, what the context is. Uh, so, that's something that's been on my mind and, um, wish I had it in place, but again, I'm, I'm trying to keep, keep it, uh, evolving and improving over time. Uh, so that's, that'll be my approach and I, and I'll, one thing too is, I, I realize that aesthetic and design, um, things can be very subjective. For me personally, there are some very strong principles that go with that and it's not as, um, as much of an opinion as maybe it is to, to many other people. I'm hoping that the critique is coming from your area of expertise. So if you know that we're looking to, uh, move something and, you know, we talked about someone had requested moving a historical sign and if someone knows, you know, that was a donation and the setup was, it's supposed to stay there, or those kinds of things. I'm hoping that we can build some credibility, I have, I feel some very strong experts and, uh, on, on my committee in their certain areas. I know Neil has done a lot with landscaping and, uh, I respect his opinion. Uh, Terry is being an architect, my experience with, uh, design as well. Um, so, it doesn't mean we're, uh, opposed to any feedback, including design feedback. But just like if there was an insurance question, I think we would defer to Glenn for his expertise, doesn't mean we don't question it, but there's certain things about insurance that I would not be the person to, to throw my body on the tracks o- over that, so. Um, I'm hoping we can build some credibility. Uh, just to be clear, um, I feel like the process, if there's an issue with something that we're doing, that I'm doing as a committee chair or any one of us, I would prefer that, um, I'm contacted first. Even if there's a desire to contact the rest of council and, and discuss it, I feel it's only right to get my side of the story before that discussion goes broader. Um, in this particular case, I found a number of mistakes of my own. Uh, one I discovered right before I came here tonight, as I was reading back over the emails and just trying to see how things played out. There's a number of, the number of factors and, and this isn't for blame purposes, it's more just like understanding what just took place and how to, how to bet- better handle it maybe in the future. One of the, one of the things that happened that I totally missed, in my flurry, I, I was very cautious and methodical on how I was wording things when I sent my email to Anne, talked about the drawing, found out the drawing was never attached. So, um, that added to the confusion. Uh, another thing that took place, and again, there's a bunch of little factors that took place on, from everybody's side, from what I can tell. Uh, and, and the purpose is just to have a process and make decisions for the betterment of the community in the best way possible. And so, uh, I didn't attach a drawing, so that, that doesn't bode well when I talk about a drawing and it's not there. Um, I, uh, think that mistake obviously on my part. A couple of other things that took place, just so that people know, is that when we first, and I wouldn't even say we, when I first formed the committee and it was in its infancy, I had asked Anne if she would like to be on that committee and talked face to face with her and she said, no, thank you, I've been on committees, I'd rather just do the work, if we are having a problem with the work, just let me know. And it was pretty straightforward. I had invited her to one of the first meetings and as far as I know, she wasn't aware of who was on my committee or not at that point, but I, I don't know. Um, she declined to join us and the purpose of having her come was to just give us context, to help us to understand, help me to understand her role, what she valued, what she didn't value, um, and she declined that. Uh, then, uh, and I'm just rolling this out, um, so, this got a little bit fast-tracked, this particular project. I think deep down, um, it's one I wanted to accomplish, uh, but, you know, by no means was it like, oh, I got it, you know, we gotta do this and we gotta do this now. Even though with the roses, you have to do it, why, preferably earlier in the season than later. And so, uh, the, the other thing was, uh, I, I'm trying to think, I had passed the project around before everybody. Uh, as far as I can tell, I received nothing but positive feedback on it. Um, also, prior, um, to that, we had another project, which was remove the lilacs underneath the oak trees over by the stone in the far corner. And, um, I knew that Anne was a little bit concerned about that, you sure you want to do that? And, um, looked at it, passed it in front of you guys, I was sure I wanted to do that and thought it was the right thing to do. Um, we removed those bushes, the first letter I received was a compliment from Anne. We just got back into town, pulled in, wasn't sure what was different about it, but wow, it sure looks good and you can see the community building. So I was wearing a little bit of that hat, um, thinking, well, people aren't that comfortable with change and there was a situation where I picked up on it a little bit, thought it was the right thing to do, we did it and received a compliment from her in the process. Uh, I know that Terry had the discussion with her and literally was, um, what, do you, what, um, what was the exact quote? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Oh, she seemed pleased with it and said, go ahead and do it as long as I don't have to do the work. I assured her we would be taking care of it.
Um, and so, and I, um, so what happened a couple of days afterwards, um, Yvonne had talked to me about it and said, well, there's some other priorities. I felt like, um, I felt like Anne was talking through Yvonne and, um, then I said, well, I'll call Anne directly. Called Anne and told her that I had a drawing, I'd like to pass by her. And just to be clear, um, I've been trying to make the best decisions I possibly can and invite anybody to, um, examine that. And in this case, good design is built around those for serving. That monument and what it represents is important. The people that access that monument are what's important. It shouldn't be based on what I think per se, it shouldn't be based on what volunteer thinks per se. Um, right now, I have pictures and I think everybody's aware, it's almost like razor ribbon to get close to that monument. And, so, you know, the flower pot was removed from the front of it, that gave us access. We were moving the roses literally five feet, in some cases maybe two or three feet, we were not getting rid of the roses, we were just moving them, allowing people access that monument and for the purpose of the monument and for the purpose of those who visit. Meanwhile, I get a call from a resident and says, you've aligned yourself with those people. And, um, I can speak to my committee right now and I'll defend it as long as it's the same. I've got a hard-working committee. I cannot speak to how they communicate to the rest of the village, I cannot speak to how they communicate to others or what they do outside of that. We have some guidelines, they are fantastic. I've got a long laundry list of very productive, good things that we should be proud of. So, um, we've been on that path, I'd like to stay on that path. And I will wind it up. Um, and then so, meanwhile, I get a call from a resident, um, found out that that person has a relationship with, uh, the person in question about us moving the roses. And then, uh, at the same time, I get a call from Greg questioning what I'm doing. And, and I couldn't tell if it was a pleasant or unpleasant thing and there's very few people on this planet so far that I've hung up on, but Greg is now a recipient of that experience. I did call him back and met him and then we had, um, gone over, I said, maybe at the gazebo, we had a discussion. Bud was going over to check out the space. One thing I should throw in there too is another thing that happened, I just see a bunch of, um, smaller things that were pretty key. So, I didn't send the drawing off to Anne, like I said I would, even though I said in there, look at the attached drawing. Um, you know, I would have liked to have her say, where, where's the drawing? So, that didn't happen. The other thing that happened is Neil was working at Malores and had a crew that had extra time. Far as I knew, nothing was gonna happen until ten AM on Saturday. And, um, it, they had gone at that point and painted out the area that was going to be dug up for the roses. Um, and I didn't know that, Anne had gone up there and saw that that was happening. She didn't have the drawing from me or I don't think an email at that point, so it could have looked like I was talking out of both sides of my mouth, like, hey, here's a drawing, what do you think? And yet, we're marking and next thing, digging already and that I didn't know was happening. Uh, the other thing is, in my conversation with Anne, after I talked with Yvonne, um, only two things came up. Anne, very clearly, I don't know if you want to put benches there, kids loiter at those benches. And, um, she also said, I've seen kids loitering at the gazebo. That's okay, I, I heard that, we had some question of how we were gonna do the bases on the benches. I, on my drawing that I hoped, I had hoped I had sent. I put two big X's to address that, saying, we're not gonna put benches there, even though we don't tear the gazebo down because kids loiter at the gazebo. So I thought I addressed that concern. The other concern was financial and said, I don't know if you should be spending your money. I said that I think it's going to be donated, it was nominal, we're just talking about mulch. Um, and so, those were the only two concerns brought before me. I sent an email saying, we were not gonna do the benches and that the financial piece was not, uh, part of the issue. I received a letter back, um, at the same time you had called, um, saying, how can you be so inconsiderate? I invited her at the initial issue of this, I pressed this in front of you, I felt that there's been, there was a little bit of an air of, almost like, um, what am I up to? What do you, almost like, what am I trying to cool, pull off or something? Uh, I still stand that we have an inferior design by moving, removing two bushes from over there. I'm okay with it, it's less about the bushes. Um, I've turned my attention elsewhere where I don't need approval for right now and we've already made some significant, uh, some significant improvements. I just ask in the future. I just ask in the future, when Anne does not honestly speak to Terry when she meets her and she does not tell me anything directly when I'm on the phone with her and I don't, I didn't feel like I was threatening at all, yet she contacts Yvonne and then sends an email to Bud and then Bud calls almost everybody except me, I just feel like it's a poor process. I feel like little respect has been afforded me or, or the group that has done a tremendous amount of work. And no benefit of the doubt or no, no opportunity to share my side of the story or our side of the story. I'd like to move on, as probably everybody else here would. There's things I would do different, hopefully the process will look a little bit different from my end and also everybody else's end and we'll get better as a result of it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. He didn't really give me a handout.
Well, the reason I called everybody, because before I called Jeff, it was not by any underhanded, for any underhanded reason, I wasn't sure, this was just me, Anne's and Kim are some of my best friends, I didn't take this lightly. Would I have made the calls and done it? Maybe not, if I hadn't been as good friends with them as I am, but I felt like the situation warranted it, Anne said, "I'm just really having my feelings hurt and I'm not sure I even want to do any volunteering anymore." And I didn't feel like we could afford to lose her as a volunteer. At some point in time, you gotta say, "Well," and I told this to Jeff, "Does the welfare of the village overcome the, any objection of an individual volunteer?" And at some point it does. I didn't really feel like this should be that point for Anne and Kim. And the reason I called everybody was because I didn't know whether it was just me or whether others felt like there might be a problem there. And that's why I called everybody, is because I wanted to see if there was a consensus, because I didn't feel as a single councilman it was my job to call Jeff up and try to put a stop to this, strictly on my own. So that's why I called everybody and asked you a kind of an open question, gave you the facts as I understood them, which wasn't a complete representation, as I found out later when I talked to Jeff. I remember that Yvonne had made an objection to the plan when it came around to us, I had made an objection to the plan when it came around to us.
I think Yvonne didn't make an objection.
Well, she questioned, I don't know what did she say, she questioned whether this had something to do with the volunteers or made some kind of comment. Didn't, didn't object to it, no. But I made a comment about the volunteers and that was my concern too. And, I don't want to raise this whole thing up, I think we beat our gums on it way too much already, but the one thing that did bother me is, is you felt I was not giving you due respect. The reason that I told you that I wanted to check with Anne was because I always, all I heard was secondhand and thirdhand information. I wanted to talk to her personally, she had contacted me, I felt like I should contact her and that's why I made that, that's why I made that comment. There's no sense in getting into this, for my perspective.
Well, I, I understand why he brought it up. I understand why he brought it up right now, just for the fact that you would contact the other people, he wanted to make sure he presented what was going on on his side of the story. Because I, he caught.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand that.
Okay. All right.
I do have one comment. I guess the thing is, and it's okay, you know, humble situations are good from my perspective. And I don't want to lose a volunteer either and I think I've done everything at the time consciously that I could to be sensitive to that, to that volunteer or any volunteer. I feel like the very little, I still go to standby, very little respect was afforded me or, or my team in this case, because it sounds like you're more concerned about losing a volunteer and you could care less whether I walked away from the whole thing, myself.
If I could care less if you walked away, when you said you were going to walk away there, I would have left and gone in my car and gone home. The reason I didn't go get in my car and go home is because I didn't want you to leave over this, I felt like, I told you, you know, I feel like you're doing a good job. If you don't feel like I'm giving you respect, I can't fix that. All I can do is try to give you the respect you feel you have coming in the future, and I don't know where it came from in the back, because I've never felt that way. If you've got that in your mind, that's something you're going to deal with, not me.
Okay. Let's, just in the future, let's try to make sure we're all, or at least the majority, more or less on the same page before we move on.
That's what I thought it was.
There are none of us, you're free agents.
Well, by the way, one thing, I'm sorry, I told Greg that I wanted to call you.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
I told Greg I wanted to call you and he said, "Well, I'd rather call him." I said, "No, I, I really feel like I ought to call him after I talked to you." I said, "The reason I talked to you last is because I figured that was going to be your reaction, but I really wouldn't want to talk." And he was adamant that he'd call you instead of me. So that was why. You were my next call after Greg, that Greg insisted that he be the one to call.
That's good to know, I appreciate it. And, and I don't want to bank, I don't want to bank everything on it. Again, I think.
I will commit to you this, if, if anything like this ever comes up, God hopes it never does, I hope it never does, but if anything ever does, I'll call you first or whoever.
And that's good. And I, and I didn't want to make that like the biggest, most important thing, I was just thinking, I see problems with my process like I expressed to you that day, and I do think we left the comments after we expressed ourselves on good terms. I was just trying to think, I've seen problems with my process, I want to pass things by everybody twice. It's a little bit trickier with, with design and that kind of thing because, you know, everybody has an opinion and oftentimes that's equally weighted. And, you know, and I understand some of that.
I don't think there's going to be, this is just the comments and that's Kim and Anne's baby and it's been their baby for years. And that's, 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 it's kind of a smart point, that area maybe, or sensitive point.
And also, and I don't mean this facetiously, I, I do appreciate you, you were being sensitive to friend, a friend, and I understand that and I think, I think that's fine, I think I have no problem with that, I appreciate that. I just felt with Anne not talking to me directly, talking to Yvonne and then talking to you, that compounded things by, you know, at the time, you, you not talking to me, I didn't know that you had that conversation with Greg that you wanted to call. It seemed like everybody had an opinion and they were sharing it with everybody else and no one was sharing that with me.
I thought it was the right thing to do and not just to go off on my own like the Lone Ranger and start to fire away.
Sure.
I will tell you. What called me, it was a one-minute conversation and it was, I know your intent is, you're...
I, I don't know how you could know what the right answer to that is in a one-minute conversation.
No, I didn't have a right answer. All he did when he contacted me was just, "Hey, I've got a concern that we might lose volun, that there's an issue with volunteers." And that was it, he was calling me more to, to I know what you think. I just, the reason I bring that up, Jeff, I don't want you to think that maybe it feels like everybody else is talking about you and it wasn't. Bud was, his intent was sincere in him saying that he was just, rather than going out like the Lone Ranger, like you said, he wanted to see, "Hey, do you guys feel..."
But I appreciate the segue.
But I, I talk about Jeff all the time, you know, it's bad.
Pretty boring.
But, but I think whether it's friends or not, the, the issue at heart was, we just don't want to step on, we've got it all out there, but step on any toes, volunteer.
By the way, I'm very, we take everybody on the comment.
Okay, good. Okay, are we finished with this topic?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adams, I believe.
Yes.
You've got a motion present.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to a rapid session for the purpose of discussing employment and compensation of full-time village employees.
There's a second?
Sir.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn in an executive session for the, to discuss compensation, employment, et cetera, village, full-time village employees. I don't know that there's any appropriate discussion on a motion such as this, so I'll have the court call the ball on the question.
Adams?
Aye.
Drews? Sorry, I'm out of here. Paulter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Walterman?
Aye.
All right, there's no intent for any action as a result of this executive session and this council's intent, I believe, to adjourn immediately from executive session to regular session and adjourn immediately from there for the evening, so we're, we're going to take it to session at this point. Thank you.